At this time, could our Zoom host please start the webinar? And confirm? Thank you. Good morning and welcome to today's hybrid New York City Council hearing for the Committee on Governmental Operations. To minimize disruptions, please place all electronic devices to vibrate asylum mode. If you'd like to submit testimony, please send via email to testimony@council.nyc.gov. Again, that is testimony@council.nyc.gov. Thank you for your cooperation. Chair Ong, we are ready to begin.
Good morning. I'm Councilmember Sandra Ong, Chair of the Committee on Governmental Operations. At today's hearing, the committee will be conducting oversight on New York City's first ever use of ranked choice voting. In 2019, after years of low turnout elections and numerous costly and even lower turnout run of elections, New York City voters approved a referendum adopting ranked choice voting, allowing voters to select their top five candidates for mayor, comptroller, public advocate, borough president, and city council. The charter provisions that establish ranked choice voting designates the Campaign Finance Board as the agency responsible for educating the public about how ranked choice voting works and the New York City Board of Elections with actually implementing RCV. As with many new ways of doing things, there were concerns about how the new voting methods would impact voters, particularly in communities of color. There were some worries that the Campaign Finance Board wouldn't have enough time or resources to educate all 4.6 million registered voters in the city about ranked choice voting. Fortunately, it appears that Campaign Finance Board, along with the New York City BOE and hundreds of community groups, were able to rise the challenge and ensure that most voters understood RCV. Almost 90% of those who came out to vote in the 2021 primaries decided to rank multiple choice candidates in at least one race. RCV implementation was not without its hiccups, and today's hearings opportunity ensure the city's next ranked choice election goes smoother. We will hear from the Campaign Finance Board about how they ensured that the public knew that ranked choice voting election was coming and how RCV works. We will also hear from the New York City Board of Elections to learn about the steps they took to ensure that the city was ready to collect and tabulate the ranked choice votes when the time came. In addition, the committee will explore ways in which implementation of ranked choice voting can be approved given changes made to election law at the state level. I look forward to discussing these and other changes with our panelists. In addition, the committee will be hearing my bill, introduction number 696, which will improve the design of ranked choice voting ballots. The bill would simplify the ballot instructions for ranked choice voting elections. It will also improve the layout of ranked choice ballots by ensuring that contests on the same ballot page are separate from one another using a bold black line, that non-English text can be easily compared to the corresponding English text, and that each language on a ballot is clearly separated and visually distinct. And lastly, the instructions regarding ranked choice voting appear whenever possible in the black font or white background. The goal of this legislation is to make as easy as possible voters, including those with limited English proficiency, to utilize ranked choice voting when they show up to vote on election day. And with that, I want to thank the representatives from the Campaign Finance Board and the City Board of Elections, who have come to testify today. I also want to thank CJ Murray and Erica Cohen for the central staff for their work in putting this hearing together. And I want to thank my own staff, Chief of Staff Alexander Hart, and my community director, Shane Miller, for their assistance. And now I'll turn it over to our committee counsel, CJ Murray, to swear in the first panel.
Thank you, Chair. I'll now swear in our first panel, which will include representatives from the Board of Elections. To all members of the BOE who will be offering testimony or will be available to answer questions, please raise your right hands. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth before this committee and to respond honestly to council member questions?
Yes.
Thank you. You may be gone.
Good morning, Chair Ong. My name is Michael Ryan. I am the Executive Director of the Board of Elections in the City of New York, and I want to thank you for the opportunity to appear today to testify on this important intro. Joining me at the table today, to my left, is Vincent M. Ignizio, the board's Deputy Executive Director, and further to my left is the Operations Manager, George Konsamannis. And to my right is Wilma Brown Phillips, the Administrative Manager. As has become my habit here, Chair Ong, we have submitted written testimony. I'm happy to read the written testimony into the record, or if you prefer that I summarize it and then we can move on to the question and answer period, which I think is usually the more important part of the process for you all, I'm happy to do whatever you suggest.
A summary would be great. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. So, as it's all detailed in our written testimony, before we look forward, I think we need to always look a little bit backwards. Starting in March of 2020, the COVID-19 pandemic emergency struck the City of New York, and certainly, the Board of Elections was no exception. In very quick summary, since that time, including one election that was canceled because of the COVID emergency, the Board of Elections in the City of New York has conducted 20 election events since March of 2020, including seven this year. And the year's not over. We think there's one more in November. However, we've had years where we've done special elections in December as well. So, we think we have one more. We think we're conducting eight this year, which, to say that's unprecedented, I think would be a monumental understatement. In addition to 20 elections over the last two and a half years, we have completed the once every 10 years reapportionment of election districts twice in three months this year, owing to litigation. Again, another unprecedented matter. And we're looking forward next year to conducting further reapportionment of the election districts as a result of the redistricting of city council lines, which will now be further potentially complicated by the re-redistricting of state assembly lines. So, we're busy. You folks are certainly busy doing the business of the City of New York. And moving forward, there is a portion in my testimony that thanks the City Campaign Finance Board for the partnership that we have developed with them. Yes, it is their charter responsibility to conduct voter education, but we have collectively and collaboratively ensured that the messaging is consistent, right down to, you know, the various words on the different mail pieces. I have included some of the voter education materials that we have distributed in our packet. And I also would like to acknowledge Susan Lerner from Common Cause and her team, and it was also the Center for Civic Design that helped us with these materials. But last night, when I was putting the final touches on my testimony, I was not paying attention to the fact that my testimony did not go far enough in thanking the Campaign Finance Board, because this will be the last Campaign Finance Board hearing for Executive Director Amy Loprest. And I would like to publicly commend her for her professionalism, her stewardship of the Campaign Finance Board, and for her friendship and collaboration for all these years that we have worked together. Now, getting to, I think, Chair, the good news for you, we have had our staff do a little test run of what we think the language of the intro 696 says and what it means and what we should be doing to do it. So, in our packet, you'll see two sample ballots. One has a gray line on it. One has a green line on it. It's of no moment either way what that means. However, the gray one is the one that we did, the style that we used in the June 2021 primary. And the green one is the way it would look based on the board's interpretation of the language in the intro. Now, if you look at the one with the green line, you'll see the word "choice," the way we interpret that it was intended to be written. You'll notice that the lettering is a little bit off to the side. You know, it doesn't quite line up the way it would on a Word document. What I would like the committee, the chair and the committee to understand is that ballots are not Word documents. What you can't see behind the ballot in the system is a grid. And the tolerances for setting up a ballot are not the same as the tolerances that you would find in a Word document. And everything has to line up, because much to perhaps the disappointment of candidates and elected officials, the system doesn't recognize your name. The system recognizes the coordinates that correspond with the oval adjacent to your name. And you'll notice on the ballots, certain dashes along the top and bottom and the left and right sides, those are timing marks that allow the eye reader to locate the ovals on the piece of paper based on the particular ballot style. So, we can't always line everything up exactly, and it will, when it comes to the written words, and it will also depend on the length of the names associated with the particular offices. But to the short point, it's doable. And I think that was hopefully the answer that the chair was looking for. Go ahead. Mr. Ignizio would like to make a statement.
Thank you. No, I just wanted to jump in where we were thanking some of our colleagues and friends, also wanted to do so to the nearly 1,000 employees of the Board of Elections. On election day, there's 37,000 poll workers. We need more poll workers, but wanted to thank them as well. And then our colleagues in government, Dan Gorodnik and the City Planning Commission, of which we could not have turned around the redistricting quickly, as quickly as possible, in that they really jumped in with both hands and got us part of the maps that we need in order to conduct this redistricting this year. So, while we were thanking colleagues and friends, I wanted to also include them.
Certainly, and there is also a written portion of our testimony that does the same, but I believe that Deputy Executive Director Ignizio was absolutely correct in making that public acknowledgement, and I thank him for doing so. So, I think that's an effective enough summary for this particular hearing, but certainly, if there's anything that I didn't address, Chair, and members of the committee that you wish to hear, we remain ready to answer any and all questions that you might pose. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for your testimony, and I do want to thank BOE for your hard work. Just a couple of questions about the ballot design introduction, since, you know, and thank you for presenting this today. I appreciate that.
Right.
So, we did discuss a little bit about the challenges, and you explained that, and I appreciate you explaining that. Is there any more resources you would need in terms of, like, any other resources to implement this bill?
So, I will tell you, I have never electronically built a ballot. I don't think that comes as a surprise to anyone, but from what the technical staff says to me, that the bill itself is not an issue. It's the limitations of the New York State Board of Elections certified firmware that we use that makes the written word have to be subjugated to the grid associated with the ballot. And so, sometimes it doesn't look exactly as neat as, you know, one might like, but it does get the point across. And you can, one could take the position that the way that it's laid out on the version associated with the bill language is clearer than the way that it was done originally. And I think that's, you know, a subject of discussion, but we're certainly happy to try to continue to make it look neater and cleaner. But this was a first attempt.
Right. This is a first draft.
We just wanted to demonstrate to you and to folks that it can be done, and maybe it can be done better, but we still have a little bit of time.
And Madam Chair, we do have sufficient resources with which to work with, though.
Excellent. Thank you. So, speaking of the time, how much more time, because we have an election coming up in June 2023 that's going to use ranked choice voting, so what is the timeline?
So, I would say this. We keep talking about having done ranked choice voting once. We've actually done ranked choice voting four times already, because we had special elections that required us to use ranked choice voting before we actually did it for the big show in June of 2021. So, I think that the external analysis that's out there and that I've reviewed and others will testify to later have demonstrated that ranked choice voting works and that it was conducted well. We have, at the board, seen a lot of tweaks and twists and turns with respect to legislative changes recently. I, for one, would advocate everyone taking a deep breath and let us do this a few times and then see what really needs to be done. We could always do it better, right? There's always a better way to run the railroad. But I'm not one personally for advocating immediate change on a new process that's still being worked out. But I think the initial reviews are good, and that's a positive sign.
That is indeed a positive sign. So, from what you're saying, there seems to be confidence that this should be done to the best of, obviously, BOE's abilities by the, for, in time for the June 2023 election.
Absolutely.
That sounds great. Thank you. I just want to right now acknowledge my community council members. I'm sorry, Councilmember Hanif, Wrestler, and Brewer. And I do have more questions, but I'm happy to turn it over to my council members right now to see if they have any questions.
I'm just reviewing the language I can read here, which is Bangla. And I'm wondering, what is your process of reviewing translation?
So, for the languages that we are statutorily required to do, we have in-house translators for each of those languages.
Could you describe what in-house translators means?
New York City Board of Elections employees that work full-time in doing translation and interpretation services.
And how many?
We usually have two for each language.
Two for each language, so then, two folks who understand Bangla.
Yes.
Did this translation.
Yes.
And then, are you aware that in some instances, some of these languages, even if the translation is done right, once transferred over to PDF or any other sort of software that we use, the letters break up, which I'm noticing some of here?
So, this particular submission is a rough draft, and we were not submitting it for the purposes of demonstrating the translated languages. We were submitting it quickly while we're prepping for the general election. We were submitting it for the purposes of addressing the chair's bill, which is to change the way the choice language is placed at the top of the candidate rows with the first, second, fourth, fifth choices. So, yes, we're aware of that problem. We're also work closely with our ballot print vendors to ensure that those breakups don't happen. On a fully edited ballot, that would be something that would be gone over. And we've also worked closely with the state legislature with respect to proposed changes to the ballot to ensure that that process isn't micromanaged to the point where we're required to use a font or style that would not work well with some of the symbolic languages, because we also do, you know, Chinese and Korean, which present other challenges, right? So, we're trying to juggle all of those balls simultaneously, but certainly, we're aware of it, and I thank you for pointing it out.
Thank you for that. And then, how do you set up the translation team to do said translation? Like, during my campaign, you know, we were struggling to really articulate ranked choice voting and kind of capture it in the way in which, in the English language, there were slogans and catchphrases and like campaign phrases, which did not directly translate into the, or didn't make any sense. And so, we sort of had to get creative to then come up with our own, our own way of talking about ranked choice voting. That was what we did for my run. And it was exciting, but it was a tough, it was a challenge. So, I'm wondering, like, as you're setting up the translation team to translate the materials, what sort of preparation work is going into it? Are they communicating with community members and various stakeholders to really dig deep a little about like, hey, how do we make sense of ranked choice voting in this, in this new language to reach our communities?
Right. Some of which, Councilmember, is the community education component of it, which the Campaign Finance Board has the larger jurisdiction over, where, and they'll speak to those comments, I think they're up after us. For us, it's a more literal translation based on the ballot itself, and the education component was less so under our jurisdiction for ranked choice.
So, then you take sort of pointers from CFP based on what CFP provides, or?
No, I was speaking to the ballot itself, whereas we do that design.
Got it.
The education component is for our colleagues at CFP.
But that having been said, as we have done with other languages, I really do believe that language education with respect to elections is, should, is and should be a community collaboration.
That's right.
So, we're always available to discuss matters, to make presentation to groups, and especially now, maybe years ago, we always thought we had to go to some meeting at 8:00 at night and schlep to some farther part of the city, but now, everybody's used to doing the Zoom conferences and other forms of teleconferences, we certainly can. One of the things that we learned with the Chinese languages in specific was we weren't reaching out to the Chinese community in the right way. And we have received some education in that regard, that there were certain publications, I'll call them publications because I'm old, but they're probably in a digital format, and we started to target our education and outreach to those specific areas in the way that was better for the community. Now, certainly, that's not a finished product either, but with respect to the communities that you're referencing, if there are things that we could be doing better, sometimes we just don't know about them. And we need a little bit of education as well, and we're happy to work and do it.
Thank you. Yeah, it's good for me to understand this so that I can work in collaboration as we move forward in the coming months.
Councilmember, it was confusing for everybody.
Yeah.
You know, it was an educational process for any district, every district in the city. So, we're happy to work with you, and we're happy to have an offline conversation that I better improve.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Chair. Thank you, and I believe now Councilmember Brewer has a few questions.
Thank you very much. Nice to see you all. It seems to me that during the election, a lot of people only checked one, and then that has a challenging effect in terms of ranked choice. So, that may be up to Campaign Finance Board to change, but is there anything, either ballot-wise or otherwise, how do we convince people, if they wish, to understand that this is not the best choice in terms of how you elect people? It's a complicated issue, and I don't know what the, maybe you could tell us a percentage of people.
So, we didn't do that research. There are other speakers here that will be speaking to that.
Yep.
But from what I've read, the ballots that checked more than one choice were 90% plus.
Okay.
And the ones that checked only one were 10% or less. So, right, when you're talking in the aggregate, it still comes out to a lot of voters if there's a large turnout, right? But if you're talking in the percentage-wise, it's to the lower end of the percentage-wise, maybe to, you know, higher on the aggregate, it depends how you're doing the analysis. But certainly, it's a worthy question to continue to review.
Okay. I thought it was a larger percentage. I didn't know that. And then, just in terms of, maybe this was asked, because I apologize for being late, but in terms of tabulating and so on, was it different in terms of the time? Was it faster? Was it shorter? How did you feel that aspect of it went, tabulating the results?
The tabulation of the results, once we get to the point where we have the full universe of ballots and they're all in the system, the tabulation goes very quickly because a computer is doing it, and you're only asking the computer to do math, right? I try to tell people, it's not like a boxing match with, at the end of the round, there's a break, and somebody comes out with a round card, and we go on to the next round. It all happens very fluidly.
I don't know nothing about boxing. But I know about, I want to get the voting right.
Right.
You can worry about the boxing.
What I'm saying is it's seamless.
Okay.
Once it happens.
And those that are ballots that come in through the mail, those are all tabulated in the same way, and the absentees and so on?
Well, yes, and we're also now in a little bit of a fluid circumstance with respect to the change in the election law. So, you're going to see, in the next time that we do ranked choice voting, you're going to see a higher percentage of the paper in the initial totals reported on election night, just like you did.
They can be done earlier.
Yes, because we have to canvass them in advance of election night, and we're seeing a high percentage of those ballots when they come in. I mean, every election is going to be a little bit different, but if we have the greater majority of the ballots available on election night, you'll have a better sense of the direction things are going.
And the software works for both? There are no changes in any software programs in terms of the future?
No, the software that we use to calculate ranked choice voting is simply an algorithm software that is available open source. So, there was not even any cost in acquisition. There was some cost associated with helping us manage it, but the acquisition, it was free, and it works.
Okay. And the training, because we always get complaints, because, you know, people love to complain about the Board of Elections all day and all night. So, the training, you know that as well as I do. So, the training that will be done for the, I assume there won't be as large a vote as there was last 2021, but I could be wrong. Who knows? The issue there is, will you be doing differently the training for your poll workers based on your history of ranked choice? Because I have to say, some of them did not understand it.
Right. Well, I think it's a work in progress. I think we played to good reviews from third parties largely, but the plan is to continue to work collaboratively with the Campaign Finance Board and Common Cause and other interested stakeholders to make sure that we're always improving. Now, you know, we do have some turnover with the poll workers, so that's always a little bit of a challenge. It's not like we have the same exact, you know, pool of people coming back year in and year out. Although, there's a lot of.
Some of them have to learn when you do ranked choice, and then they have to learn when you don't do ranked choice, right?
Well, and in this particular, well, last June, and in this upcoming June, there, it's a split.
Right.
Right? So, there's ranked choice voting happening at the same time that the traditional voting happens.
So, that's a particular kind of training, I would assume.
Yep, absolutely.
All right. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, and now Councilmember Wrestler has a few questions.
Thank you so much, Chair Ong. Greatly appreciate your leadership of this committee. And while I might say there's a little bit too much Staten Island energy on our panel today, we appreciate.
I don't think you would say that.
We appreciate Mike and Vinnie's good work and everyone at the BOE.
How come you never say that about Brooklyn?
Because it's never true. But I also want to thank.
Councilmember, I was born in Brooklyn, right?
Well, there we go. We got one Brooklynite on the panel, and your general counsel is a distinguished Brooklynite who we love, so we appreciate that.
And my mother was born in Brooklyn.
You have a Manhattanite on the panel, too.
There you go. So, no, no, but I do also want to thank Amy for her years of distinguished service at the CFP. Thank you for everything you've done to educate New Yorkers, engage New Yorkers in our electoral process. We really appreciate your service. Just a few questions. You know, I remember, what month are we now? We're in September. So, it was maybe 15 months ago, 20 months ago, when many of our colleagues and former colleagues and others insisted that the sky was falling because RCV was being implemented, pursued litigation and other things to try to stop it from happening. But just to reiterate, over 90% of ballots that were cast in New York City last year, voters chose multiple candidates in the election.
That's the information that I reviewed, yes. That's the information that I reviewed, yes, the Board hasn't done an independent assessment of that, but yes.
And we had a significant majority of voters of all racial backgrounds say that they understood the RCV process.
I'll take that as a fact, if you, if you know it to be, that's not something that I'm personally aware of.
Um, I, I do think it's worth noting that with an RCV process, we generated the most diverse city council and most diverse city government in the history of New York City, uh, which I think is a credit in part, uh, to this electoral system, um, and I'm very happy to see its success in its, uh, in the special elections and of course, in the 21 cycle, and look forward to continuing, continuing, um, uh, to see the success of RCV in the years ahead. I wanted to ask, I realize that it's primarily the purview of the CFB, but could you speak to the BOE's efforts to ensure that more and more New Yorkers understand how RCV works?
So, last go around, and you'll see copies of it, uh, Councilmember, in the materials that I provided, we provided the, some of the education materials that, that we did, and every, every year, it's now going to be in May, uh, we have to, we have to mail to all 4.7 million active voters, we have to send out a mailer, uh, regarding, uh, the elections, the upcoming elections for the year, annual information notice, we call it, and all of that RCV information is there as well, but last go around, and we plan to do it again, we did a very, uh, robust public education, uh, program utilizing the city kiosks and, and ads and, and other things, all to supplement, uh, and to coordinate with, uh, the Campaign Finance Board, and we worked collaboratively on the language with them to make sure that we weren't saying something, uh, differently, uh, than, than they were, uh, and to avoid confusion.
That's helpful. Um, I appreciated Councilmember Hanif's questions about, uh, understand, that led to kind of a greater understanding of your in-house translation services, similarly interested in understanding, does, do you all employ or have a contract with a consultant for graphic designers who specialize in ballot design and stay up to date on the latest research relating to ballot design? Does this individual meet with voters to hear feedback and, and ensure that we're kind of implementing the most up-to-date and thoughtful practices to make it easy for voters to understand the ballot? And, relatedly, when a ballot design is drafted, is it tested with sample voters ahead of the election?
So, so I want to be very, very clear, we don't have the freedom within the structure of the New York State election law to, to design a ballot any way that we want, so with some of these innovations, uh, the way that I think the better way to accomplish that, because we're following exactly what the New York State let, election law says we have to do, uh, is for folks that want to make a change, whether it's this body or anyone else, to work with the New York State Legislature, uh, to then work with the New York State Board of Elections, so that all 62 counties in the state, uh, can have a ballot that, uh, provides as much, uh, information and service to the voters as possible. We design the ballot the way the New York State election law says we have to.
Can I sneak one more question in? Uh, oh, thank you. Um, not the direct purpose of this hearing, but a priority of mine is expanding access to translators at our polling sites. I know this has been an issue of tension with the previous administration, um, and wanted to hear if this was an issue that the BOE was reconsidering, if the city is prepared to fund additional translators to be at polling sites, can those translators come into the polling sites and actually facilitate, um, assistance for people who are desperately in need of translation?
So I, I would say, um, that that's a little bit of a dated concern, uh, the Civic Engagement Commission was, uh, passed, uh, and is now part of the New York City Charter. All we were looking for in the past was clear direction and predictability. With now the Civic Engagement Commission having the responsibility to do that, uh, we work collaboratively with CEC, uh, and those issues, uh, as far as I see, from where I sit, uh, have, have faded, uh, away. Can we always do something better? I'm sure we can, and, but we work collaboratively with them.
So the CEC-funded translators are permitted into the poll sites to provide assistance as needed at this point?
Yes.
Great, I apologize for not being as up to date as I should, but thank you for clarifying, that is very good news.
Correct.
Thank you, and thank you, Chair Ung.
Thank you, and I also wanted to, um, thank, um, Councilmember Eric Dinowitz for being with us today, um, I believe he has a few questions, too? Sorry.
Yes. Hello, good morning.
You don't have to ask any questions, you just.
I get the sense you don't want to answer questions.
No, it's okay, you can.
Well, I, I, you know, appreciate that you're here, in fact, uh, my first election was District 11, um, in March of last year, it was one of the first elections, it was the second election, tied for second place with Councilmember Felice, to use ranked choice voting. And one of the things that, uh, that occurred leading up to the, um, the election was that the Campaign Finance Board, the Board of Elections, really relied heavily on existing groups in the district to provide the education to our community, and it's going to be no surprise that in the district, it was the, the more white and the more affluent parts of my district that had, um, more, more engaged or more, or more groups who were reaching out to the Board or the Board was reaching out to. Um, so I'm interested, one, in the actual data, what is, I, I know Councilmember Ressler said it as a, a statement, what, what is the data? What are the data that, that demonstrates that the communities of color engage in ranked choice voting in the same manner as the more affluent communities in my special election and in the primary, uh, comparing, you know, number of, oh, not me, number of candidates, uh, chosen, and also number of ballots that may have been rejected? Are those data that you have?
I don't have that data, I believe that the Campaign Finance Board, uh, is going to speak to that, I'm, I'm hopeful, I'm not putting, uh, words in their mouth and, and providing their testimony, uh, but I will say this, um, I'm looking at my list, and your special election was on March the 23rd.
A great day.
2021.
That's right.
Uh, and the way that the requirements were drafted with respect to not only the City Board of Elections, but the Campaign Finance Board, the target was to conduct the first ranked choice voting election in the June primary, uh, and then, uh, we got hit with a special election, uh, on the 23rd of February, and a special election on the 23rd of March and thereafter, uh, and the first ranked choice voting election, quote-unquote, was actually the fourth ranked choice voting election, so we kind of were pressed, uh, you know, into service on ranked choice voting very quickly, but we are happy to work, uh, with everyone to make sure that this process, uh, goes smoothly, uh, for all voters, and that all voters are fully enfranchised.
Right, I think, I think one of the things that would help, and I'm, I'm sure the data exists, is, you know, in, in certain, in certain neighborhoods, you know, how many voters chose five candidates, four, three, and then also, how many ballots were rejected? Um, and just speaking to that is the second, is my second question, um, there, there was, I know you mentioned the kiosks, obviously, the community groups were doing the outreach, the education, you know, we had education efforts in, in my district that my office conducted for the primary, but what we also had on our ballots, and we had this type of ballot in Manhattan, were other candidates on the ballot, uh, sorry, other non-municipal offices on the ballot. For example, in my district, we had judicial candidates where you had to vote for any two, not rank them, any up to two, we had judicial delegates where you voted for up to 12. In Manhattan, you had the first pass the post, you had the Manhattan DA's race. So what I'm interested also is, as you did the ranked choice voting, uh, education, which was the same throughout the city, did it look different in different boroughs to say, you know, we also have these, these other elections which use different methods of voting? So that's the first part of the question, is are you tailoring the education for your poll workers and to the communities? And the second part of the question is, again, were any ballots spoiled because in some way or another someone mismarked their ballot because they had the ranked choice voting really down, and were confused when it came to the judges, or it came to the district, district attorneys, or it came to the judicial delegates, or any of the other non-municipal, um, uh, candidates on the ballot?
So, we send out an annual information notice, that's going to be standard, that's going to be, uh, across the board, but we certainly work in the individual geographical areas to target the, the messages to the particular communities, but when I'm saying that, right now, we're doing it more in terms of appropriate translation of materials. We are certainly happy to continue to work with, uh, the Campaign Finance Board and other, uh, interested stakeholders, to make sure that we're collectively messaging for the appropriate, appropriately for the communities.
Right, and that.
Sure.
Thanks. Um, but, but are the, so the, you know, these flyers or the, the PowerPoints that you use, are they, and if they're not, you know, we're here to make things better for our voters?
Right.
If they're not, can they be tailored for the individual boroughs or in certain cases, districts, to address the fact that, you know, poll workers are, you know, they, they need the training, our voters need the training, and it just looks different, uh, in the Bronx in a particular election than it may look in Manhattan, and that's, and that's okay, that, that's what our elections look like, and if those varied training materials don't exist, can they look different going forward to address those individualized needs of our communities?
Well, I certainly appreciate the, the advocacy for, for your community, as well you should, uh, and we're certainly happy to, uh, address those issues, uh, with the Campaign Finance Board, but I can tell you, in the time that I've been here, as we move away from printed material and move more towards, uh, digital, uh, platforms, we're able to engage in, increasingly engage in, uh, some geo-fencing exercises and targeting, uh, and targeting messaging, not so much with the RCV, because we're, we're kind of the, the second seat on this, uh, but I'm, I'm sure that we can continue that collaboration with the Campaign Finance Board.
I, I, the, the second, I.
Councilmember, if I, if I can dovetail on, on that, though, the poll workers in each individual boroughs, though, are taught about their specific.
Yes.
Borough ballot, so they, they will have the information of, it's a two pager, it's a three, it's a whatever, that is sort of specified by borough as well.
Yeah, I think, I, I, I would just, my recommendation is to just take another look at what that training looks like, because it was not my sense that every poll worker was, uh, telling voters to turn the ballot over, or really had a good, um, every poll worker had a good grasp of the differences in ways to vote, and that, I don't, I don't put that on them, you know, these are, I put that on the training, and that's what I want to see going forward. Uh, the other part of that was, if you could just provide the data on, you know, is it a problem, right? How many of the ballots, uh, for judges or for DA's or for any other race that's non-municipal, doesn't rank, rank choice voting, how many of those offices had to be thrown out because of mistakes in the ballot? That could be amended, could be fixed if, if we improve our training both for our poll workers and our, and our voters, so if you can, uh, share that, I'll, and I'll say, if I, one other thing, it's not even a question, it's just, um, suggestion, because I know time is, is limited, I appreciate the time I've been given, um, you know, I, I, there was a change made, I believe, last year, um, where, which allowed poll workers to work part of the day instead of the full 15 hours, whatever it is, is that correct?
There was a, a change in the election law that permitted split shifts, it was, it was a few years ago now.
Right.
Yep.
And what I would love to see, which, which I didn't see, I taught in schools, I, I didn't see it, I would, I would love to see the, the, the Board, the CFB, the DOE, all working collaboratively, because we have students who don't work, who don't have school on Election Day, and would be, are, are great resources to provide them the opportunity to engage, um, in, you know, in public service, engage in their communities, and guess what? A lot of our kids speak languages other than English, and can provide a great service to our community, especially as we talk about reaching out to, to, to members of our community who do not speak English, so I, I would love to, to see that effort be more robust if it doesn't, if it exists already.
It does.
And I would, I would love to, in my community, I would love to help facilitate some of those conversations, because, as I said, I, I haven't seen it in my community, it doesn't mean it doesn't exist, but I would love to help make that happen.
Councilmember, our.
For the same kids in our community.
Our operations manager is writing your name, address, everything, she will call you, and you may regret that.
She, I see.
It's possible.
But we do have one, and thank you.
So, so, and Councilmember, I would like to say a couple, a couple more things, uh, if you can take note when you vote, uh, in November, uh, because there will be propositions on the back, uh, Brooklyn's actually going to have two sheets of paper, the Bronx won't, you'll have one sheet of paper with stuff on both sides, but.
You can serve paper in the Bronx.
There is an arrow on, on the ballot itself, a large prominent arrow, uh, so we can, within the tolerances of the ballot, we can work to improve that, and I would also make, uh, this offer to you as I make to every, uh, legislator, uh, in the city, um, we're at 42 Broadway, uh, I'll even say my number, it's, uh, 212-487-5403, we get phone calls, I'm happy to meet with you, come to the Bronx, uh, as a team collectively, and work on whatever issues you need to work on, uh, offline, I make that offer to everyone, very few people actually take me up on it, but there is one city council member here presently in the room that has taken me up on it consistently over the years, uh, for her constituents, and that is Councilmember Brewer, uh, and we work very collective, collaboratively in that regard, and we welcome it, because you guys truly are the eyes and ears of the community for us.
Thank you, and I thank the Chair for extending me, uh, the courtesy and the time, thank you.
One other thing, uh, Chairwoman, that we do, or that a committee that we do, is, um, I think it's part of it to take a nice walk, but I'm here every week during stated as well to field any issues that council members have, and that comes from my history of being a council member, you, you remember, oh my God, I have a problem with this, and they want to talk to somebody, so I try to make myself personally available during stated meetings here at the council, and some of it is, uh, seeing old friends and enjoying the, the beautiful building, but a lot of it is to try to get to any issue that a council member might have in their, in their district before it becomes a bigger issue.
Thank you.
Great, thank you, I just have one quick follow-up question regarding the state law of counting absentee ballots, does that mean, and, you know, we all talked about elections last year, and probably certain parts of it I'm trying to block out, but I, I do remember part of the, you know, we had to wait a bit to wait for the final results, I think part of that was because of the absentee and also ranked choice voting, so with the new state law, does, I'm just curious, what is the process now, does that get to be counted on Election Day with ranked choice voting?
Right, so with the new, uh, state election law, um, we have to, we continually canvass the ballots as they come in at specific intervals, so this, we only did it once for the first time in June, but our quick response is, we're seeing the majority of the absentee ballots included in the election night results, however, there's always a little semicolon however after that, right? Uh, they also implemented the cure process, so if somebody makes a mistake on their ballot, so to, to give you the outlier, it, seven days after the election, we can receive a ballot that has been postmarked by Election Day. If there's a mistake on that absentee ballot, we have to send it out, uh, back, a cure letter out to the, to the voter, so we, then there's a, a little bit of a delay on the back end, but the good news is, the majority of the votes that are go, the overwhelming majority of votes that are going to be cast on, uh, in the election will be received and canvassed, uh, on, on Election Night, so we'll have a much better sense next time than we did last time.
Right, and that also includes the ranked choice portion of it, because I, I remember election last year, we waited because the ranked choice wasn't tabulated at the same time.
Right, so, so the, the round-by-round, that is going to still be a continued conversation, when do we, at what moment in time do we conduct the round-by-rounds? Do we conduct periodic unofficial round-by-rounds in between Election Night and certification? Uh, and that still is going to be a conversation that will involve feedback of the elected officials and the commissioners and such, to see, how should we do it exactly?
Thank you, and, um.
Yep.
I'd love to have, um, that conversation view, and please also keep us posted about the conversations being had about that.
Yes, we certainly appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, I'm, I'm good with all the questions.
Thank you very much.
Well, thank you all very much, appreciate it. Appreciate it.
Okay, I'll now swear in our second panel, which will include representatives from the Campaign Finance Board to all members of the Campaign Finance Board, who will be offering testimony or available for questions. Please raise your right hands. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth before this committee, and to respond honestly to council member questions?
I do.
You may be yet.
Thank you, Chair Ong, and members of the City Council Governmental Operations Committee for the opportunity to testify today. My name is Amy Loprest. I'm the Executive Director of the New York City Campaign Finance Board. I'm joined, to the far right, by Amanda Malo, Deputy Director of Public Affairs, who will deliver the second half of our testimony, and Ali Swatek, Director of Policy and Research, who is available to answer questions. As most of you know, the Campaign Finance Board is a nonpartisan and independent agency tasked with administering the city's matching funds program, NYC Votes, an initiative of the CFP, works alongside community organizations, volunteers, and other city agencies to register, educate, and engage voters across the city. At the end of October, after 16 years of Executive Director and a combined 25 years with the agency, I will be retiring from the CFP. It has been an honor and a privilege to serve as a Director of the Campaign Finance Board, and I'm confident that our strong partnership with the City Council will continue into the future. I thank you for the kind words that people have said about me, and I thank Mike Ryan, the Director of the Board of Elections, for our great partnership over the many years. This agency has contributed meaningful improvements in city elections over the past few decades. I am particularly proud of our work in the 2021 election, which resulted in the election of the most diverse city council in history. Ninety-six percent of the newly elected members were participants in the public matching funds program. Under discussion today is Intro 696 of 2022, which would make substantive improvements to ranked choice voting ballot instructions and design. As mandated by a 2019 New York City Charter Amendment, the CFP conducted a voter education campaign leading up to the 2021 ranked choice voting elections. Our staff also conducted focus groups with New York City voters, community leaders, and nonpartisan experts. To craft a communication strategy, we ensured that RCV information would reach and be understood by low and high-information voters, especially those in Black, Latino, and limited English-speaking communities. In collaboration with the Center for Civic Design, one of our primary partners, the CFP developed a "bite, snack, meal" approach to educate voters about ranked choice voting. With this approach, the CFP created materials that met voters where they were, whether they wanted a quick overview or a detailed description of the vote tabulation process. In late 2020, the CCD conducted in-depth usability tests with New York City voters to fine-tune RCV messaging for the public. The CCD's research also drove NYC Votes voter guide and website redesign. As a result, nycvotes.org is more usable and accessible than ever before. The Campaign Finance Board and countless elected offices, organizations, community leaders, and New Yorkers worked tirelessly to educate the public on ranked choice voting. We coordinated our communication strategy directly with the Board of Elections in the City of New York, the entity tasked with administering the elections. We also coordinated with the mayor's office, so our messaging remained consistent throughout the voting process. Thankfully, the first ranked choice voting primary election was largely a success. Roughly 1 million people voted in the June 2021 primary, the highest turnout for a New York City local primary election in decades. Furthermore, 88.3% of ballots ranked some of the 374 candidates on the ballot, and 89.3% of Democrats and 56.6% of Republicans ranked multiple unique candidates in at least one race for their respective primaries. However, turnout rate disparities between boroughs and further disparities in ballot-marking errors suggest that there is much more to be done when it comes to voter education and ballot design. I will now turn it over to Amanda Malo, who will deliver the remainder of our testimony.
Thank you, Amy. The CFP is pleased to see that Intro 696 is informed by the Center for Civic Design's guidance. The bill would mandate best practices that make ballot instructions and headers easier to read and ensure that information in non-English languages is well-positioned and legible. If the bill passes, the text on the ballot would also more closely resemble the language used in the CFP's voter guide. Minor changes like these can significantly improve accessibility and may also reduce ballot marking errors. However, these changes should comport with existing technology and software acquired by the city BoE, and we defer to their technical expertise on which changes are possible. The CFP supports Intro 696 and finds that our efforts to improve RCV information accessibility will complement the bill's measures. The vast majority of voters filled out their ballots correctly in the 2021 primary, with only 1.2% of ballots having at least one fatal overvote error. This occurs when a voter marks two candidates for the same race as their first choice, leading to that race being invalidated on their ballot. This is also called first-choice overvoting. During its first ranked choice voting election in 2004, districts in San Francisco experienced similar overvote rates. Over the course of all RCV elections held in San Francisco between 2004 and 2016, San Francisco had an average first-choice overvote rate of 0.8%. A recent study by Fair Vote and the Ranked Choice Voting Resource Center found that the first use of a new ballot style, as New Yorkers experienced in 2021, is naturally associated with a higher error rate. So, we might also expect to naturally see a reduction in error rates as voters become accustomed to RCV. The council districts with the three highest fatal overvote errors in any race for the June 2021 primary election were all in the Bronx. Council districts 14, 16, and 17 had fatal error rates between 3.2 and 3.8%. To address this issue, the CFP plans to focus on these districts for our voter education campaigns, partnering with community groups to educate voters about the correct way to fill out an RCV ballot in 2023 and 2025. These districts already lie within our priority voter education neighborhoods in Central and South Bronx. Our other priority neighborhoods are in North Central Queens and South and Southeast Brooklyn, where ballot errors were not as frequent, but turnout remains lower than the city's average. The CFP is also working to reach communities with limited English proficiency and provide greater accessibility in future elections. The NYC Votes website is currently available in English, Spanish, Bengali, Korean, and Traditional Chinese, the Federal Voting Rights Act languages. Due to a recent law passed by the council, starting on January 1st, 2013, all features of the website and the voter guide will now be available in eight additional languages: Russian, Haitian Creole, Arabic, Urdu, French, Polish, Hindi, and Punjabi. We will also offer closed captioning and ASL interpretation, among other accessibility improvements for our online voter guide. We included recommendations to improve the way election results are reported, and data is released in our 2021 voter analysis report. For example, RCV election results could be published in stages similar to how the city BoE published unofficial results in 2021. Additionally, we proposed changes that could make it easier to analyze RCV data at the ballot level, and consequently identify areas needing additional outreach. This would include areas with more frequent ballot marking errors. We are discussing these two recommendations with the BoE and look forward to continuing our strong partnership with them in 2023. We applaud the council's Governmental Operations Committee for taking steps to improve the ranked choice voting experience. The Campaign Finance Board reaffirms its commitment to educating New Yorkers about RCV and looks forward to working with organizations, community leaders, and elected officials, especially those within our priority neighborhoods, as we approach future ranked choice elections. Thank you for the opportunity to testify today. Ali Swatek, Amy Loprest, and I are happy to answer any questions the council may have.
Thank you, and a big thank you to Executive Director Amy Loprest, and congratulations.
Thank you.
I just have a few quick questions, actually. And thank you for your testimony. It was, you know, a very insightful testimony about ways that RCV can improve next year. So, now that you do have the vote experience for one year, what are the other approaches you have to reaching out more and better to the rest of the RCV voters?
Yeah, that is an excellent question. So, we did collect a lot of feedback after the 2021 elections. As Executive Director Ryan mentioned, we actually had four bites of the apple of trying to get ranked choice voting right. I think we learned a lot about what we could improve. So, working with the council on legislation that was passed in 2021, we actually found that our most popular and most requested material was the large-print handouts that we created in all languages. So, we know we are certainly going to emphasize that next time around. I would also say that the biggest piece of critical feedback that we received was that we simply weren't translating into enough languages. So, we think that that is going to be significantly improved when we're adding eight additional languages next time around. Another thing I would say is that we are, after legislation passed by the council earlier this year, in addition to adding a language access team in the Public Affairs Division, we are also adding to our partnerships and outreach staff to be able to increase our community engagement beyond the level of staffing that we had in 2021. So, we have hired and onboarded new people. They are already out, like, contacting folks in the community and identifying organizations that we know are going to be key to us continuing these efforts.
That's great to hear. So, there are no issues with staffing, because right now, there seems to be a tightening of the labor market, especially the ability to speak multiple languages. So, that's not been an issue so far?
You know, I certainly defer to Amy on talking agency-wide. I can only speak to the staff we are hiring in Public Affairs. I think one thing that we have observed is that we are seeing fewer applications across the board. I think we all know that government hiring is becoming more challenging, retention is becoming more challenging. We aren't seeing as many problems on the retention side, as far as I can tell. While we are getting fewer applications, we have still been very lucky in that we have been able to get excellent applicants. And we have, you know, really focused our recruitment efforts, I would say, also on making sure that we're hiring folks from the communities that we want to be sure that we're serving. So, I could not be happier with the staff that we have onboarded, all of whom I think are fantastic.
That is actually great to hear. So, one last question. You know, you did say in the testimony, and I think we all believe this is true, that, you know, working with a community-based organizations of the different communities, especially the ones that speak the language, is very important. Have you thought about any ways to improve that, change the approach to make it better for next year?
Another excellent question. So, I actually want to circle back to a point Councilmember Hanif was making earlier in the hearing, because one of the things that we are thinking about a lot, particularly with regards to language access, in the discussions we're having a lot in the division right now, is how to do transcreation rather than just translation.
Okay.
Our model has been, unlike the Board of Elections, we do not have in-house translators. We have always relied on vendors, both for an initial translation and for QA after the facts. So, we certainly have gotten feedback from community members that, like, maybe translations weren't quite right, or it didn't resonate quite well. So, I think one of our strategies to be able to address that is, first of all, actually adding a language access team, which I'm thrilled about, because we have not had that before. And they really bring in excellent insights as to how to create more culturally competent materials. But one of the things, actually, our senior team was discussing just yesterday, was how we can be building in feedback mechanisms, not just as the election is going, but earlier on. So, I actually think that that was a great example of how ranked choice voting could be difficult to communicate about in different communities or in different languages. And I think one of the takeaways I would draw from that is that when we know these changes are going into effect, it's actually really important to start those conversations earlier, and have them be proactive rather than reactive, and start to engage community members from the get-go to think about what is the way that we can actually, like, translate this information, but also in a way that makes sense to different communities, in a way where maybe just translating the words doesn't quite work the same way. So, that is my biggest takeaway, I think.
No, that's great, and I do agree with that. Literal translations doesn't, actually doesn't work well in many settings, and really does not work well in election settings. So, I think it's great from what you're saying, you're working the community groups to get that feedback before, you know, when working with any translations.
Yeah, absolutely.
Great. And we could talk about this later, but I don't know, do you have a list of all the community groups you're working with?
We are absolutely happy to provide a complete list. Off the top of my head, there are a few really strong partners I would love to mention. So, we have always worked with all three library systems, the YMCA and CUNY and all of its campuses. We also work with organizations such as Minquan, the Hispanic Federation, Faith in New York, NY Adapt, and the Center for the Independence of the Disabled. So, those are some really strong partners we have. Of course, me mentioning some partner organizations off the top of my head is sure to leave many out. So, we're really happy to provide a list. And I would also say that we really rely on partnering with council member offices to help us further identify groups in the community that we might not be connected to. That was actually a really strong connector source for us in 2021, in 2022, and also, you know, looking ahead.
Thank you, and I look forward to that. And I do look forward to seeing that list. I'm happy in my office to work with you to identify more groups that could be able to do that. Thank you. And Councilmember Brewer has a few questions.
Thank you, Amy. I don't believe in retiring, as you know. I don't think anybody should ever retire. So, who picks... I don't want you to retire. Who picks the new person? How does that process? I worry about politics.
So, actually, yesterday, the Board issued a press release announcing the new Executive Director, who the Board, you know, the Campaign Finance Board, which is an independent body, did a national search for a new Executive Director. And the new Executive Director is Beth Rotman, who I'm going to get her current title wrong. I think it's the National Director of Money and Politics and Ethics for Common Cause, and had previously, many, many years ago, left in 2006, was at the Campaign Finance Board as a Deputy General Counsel, left to be the startup founder of the Connecticut Public Financing Program, and so has great experience in both working locally, on a statewide level, and nationally with various partners.
We're still going to miss you.
Well, thank you. I appreciate it. I will miss this, too.
So, you know, my question, you can imagine, I do not like that civic participation. I fought them. I put money against them. I don't believe in them, and I don't like them, and they should go away. How do they work with you? I mean, maybe you can't be as honest, but since you're retiring, you can tell me. Because there's too much overlap, duplication. It makes no sense. They should go away. That could save money.
Well, I will say that, you know...
You don't have to be nice about it anymore.
Well, I will let, you know, the people who more directly work with them speak, too, but I will say that I think we've carved out a good relationship of, you know, they have, you know, multiple mandates.
None of which makes sense.
And so...
All of which duplicate somebody else's work.
Yeah, and so, we have carved out a good partnership so that, you know, the voting work that we do, and when it was, when Democracy NYC was a part of the mayor's office, and now it's part of the civic engagement community, we worked very closely with the people at Democracy NYC to make sure that the messages were consistent and clear, so that there weren't, you know, multiple voters...
But they do the same thing you do. They're trying to educate the voter. What in the world is the difference?
I would actually love to jump in here, because I would say we're actually seeing less duplication than we saw before, when Democracy NYC was also a standalone organization. So, you have... So you had sort of BOE, CFP, Democracy NYC, and CEC sort of all in the same space. And we all worked very closely together, but could be very frank with each other about the challenges of that because we all had different mandates, different directives from the offices we worked for. So one of...
But what do they do differently than what you could do? Because really, I don't understand it.
So actually, I would say they are, I have had discussions with the Executive Director about how we can coordinate better so that we aren't overlapping work. And we really, we had an honest conversation about what is it that we uniquely bring to the table. And I think that what I'm seeing now is that the Civic Engagement Commission is really focused on launching participatory budgeting on a citywide basis.
Which has nothing to do with you.
It has nothing to do with us.
But all elected officials can do it on their own. We do not need their input, but that's not your comment, that's mine.
And I would also say, one of the ways that CEC was very helpful during 2021 was that they translated materials and languages that we weren't currently translating into. Now that we will be providing those translations, they are going to be stepping back from that. I would also say, one of the things they do that we do not is that poll site interpreter program. That program is essentially going to have a sunset date when the statewide Voting Rights Act kicks in, the language access provisions will kick in in 2025, and the City Board of Elections will be required to provide interpreters at the poll sites, inside the poll sites, in more languages than they currently do. So once that happens, you are no longer going to need to have the same Civic Engagement Commission program where you have a separate set of interpreters outside the poll sites.
So even more reason to get rid of them, is what you're sort of saying.
I cannot comment to that.
I can. I can think lots of ways that we could save money. So the other question I have is, just in terms of outreach, you've done, I think, a lot of great work. What about the schools? I mean, the schools have so many issues. Is there something game-wise, et cetera, that we could do so people understand ranked choice? I don't know, but it does seem a place that maybe you are doing work, it's a very large, yeah, but it's not clear. Just so you know, I'm in every school, I know every school in Manhattan. I have never heard any principal talk to me about ranked choice voting.
So I would say we have a really fantastic youth engagement coordinator that partners a lot with both the Department of Education, like on an agency level, and also...
Well, that's the first problem.
Also individual schools. I'm sure you can appreciate how challenging it can be to actually get into the school system.
But not if you call us.
Yeah, so we are happy to, like often, again, these are sort of the connector areas where we can get into schools that maybe didn't necessarily happen before because we always offer, but it does also rely on schools taking us up on our offer when they have a lot of competing...
Because they have so many challenges, yeah.
They have a lot of challenges, they have a lot of things they have to do. So, you know, we have a lot of fantastic partners among principals and teachers, but we also know that there are more areas that we can...
Look, I would suggest that working through the Council or the CECs, do not go through the Department of Education. That's a big mistake. Or go through the UFT or the CSA. I always go to them first. That's where you get action.
We have multiple avenues, and we look forward to working with you on...
Yeah, but it's not working. I'll be honest with you. I ask every teacher, principal, they do not have any clue about this instruction. And don't give it to that other organization either. How much did you spend on citywide media campaign last, I guess, the last election in 2021? Do you have some number?
Yeah, so specifically for the advertising campaign, our media buy is around $1 million. When you were looking at what we spent on ranked choice voting overall, I'd put it at around $2 million, not including staff time because a lot of that money went into not only the ad creative, but also redesigning, doing research with the Center for Civic Design, redesigning the voter guide and our website according to that research, and then actually paying for the development work to do that, as well as creating a video and explaining our materials.
Do you have any analysis of the voter guide? I know it's hard, many languages, much information. Do you have any analysis? It's a little hard to read. I understand that it's complicated. I got it.
So I'm not sure if you mean the print guide or the online guide because...
Print, print, I'm on print.
All right. So one of the things we actually were just discussing yesterday is putting the 2021 guide in front of community groups and collecting feedback to think about how to improve the print guide for 2023. I think we made a lot of improvements in the 2021 guide over what we had done before in terms of simplifying and clarifying information and making sure that we were delivering information voters absolutely want to see. But we also know that we can always be doing better or we can think about delivering things in ways like maybe it just didn't make sense to people.
I mean, I know how hard it is, but there may be, I'm not a graphic artist. Can you let us also have some input? Because we know people that might have some suggestions.
We would be happy to do that.
Mike Ryan talked about, you know, some of the analysis. I think he had, I don't know that they've actually done one. It sounded like they have read and others have. So I'm just wondering, is there additional data in addition to what Mike Ryan talked about?
Yes, I would love to speak about that. So we looked extensively at the cast vote record, which was provided by the Board of Elections, as required by law, for our voter analysis report in 2021, which was published this year in April. And what the cast vote record shows that the regular election results do not is the ballot level information. So it's anonymized and you can't see like a who voted that ballot, but it does show the individual level votes of a ballot and the areas where that ballot was cast. So we were able to look at what areas had a higher rate of overvoting, which meant that their first choice was, they'd voted for two people in their first choice, which invalidated that section of their ballot. We also looked at instances of undervoting where, I believe that Councilmember Dinowitz was speaking on this, or perhaps it was you earlier.
I think we both did, yeah.
Yeah, about the fact that there were folks who voted for a single candidate and then didn't rank the rest of their ballot. Of course, that doesn't invalidate the ballot. They're perfectly allowed to do that. And we can't really opine on whether it's because they don't understand ranked choice voting or because they just sincerely wanted to vote for one person. So in doing so, we're able to kind of identify areas where additional outreach may be necessary for educating those voters about ranked choice voting. Amanda spoke on that in the testimony earlier.
Three areas in particular.
Yes, there were areas of the Bronx particularly that had a higher rate of overvoting. But we have, I believe, 21 neighborhood areas in our priority neighborhoods list that, some of which definitely also saw higher rates of ballot error than others. So that's something we're really looking forward to continuing to analyze and be able to provide more information for folks on. So read our voter analysis report for more information.
Also, just your report generally that you did on the election was excellent. I didn't, I thought you needed some more recommendations about the crazy way we have to fill out forms, but it was an excellently looking report.
Thank you.
I just want to add one more thing about our advertising, you know, to just point out. In addition to that bite snack meal approach, you know, when we approached, because we have both the mandate to educate voters about ranked choice voting and also to encourage voters, people to actually get out and vote, we intentionally created our materials that did both of those things. So instead of just focusing on, this is how you do ranked choice voting, we also made sure that all of our materials included messaging that encouraged people to vote, why you want to vote at all, and then, of course, there's this new way to vote. So that, you know, fits both our dual missions, but also, I think, is more useful to voters because to get just a thing about ranked choice voting, if you don't even know why it's important to vote.
So when you do the analysis next, I guess you'll be looking at undervoting, overvoting, but maybe some of the things that you just mentioned also. To have more deeper analysis of why we're hardly voting, that would be the other. Whether ranked choice helps or hurts or whatever. Okay, thank you. I don't like that other organization, as you can tell. Thank you.
Great, thank you. I just have one quick follow-up question about the media campaign. How much of that is allotted to the ethnic medias?
I'm so happy you asked this question because I would say approximately half is allocated to either community and ethnic media or in-language media, and I do want to draw that distinction. Because what we have found is that the way that the community and ethnic media policy is drawn, there are a lot of very large in-language outlets that will never be counted because they have corporate ownership. So I think Univision and Telemundo are great examples. We know those are incredibly important outlets in the Spanish language communities around the city. Those are not included in the formula for community and ethnic media. So I would say, overall, about 33% of our ad spending is in outlets that are covered, but then I went and identified an additional 161,000 that was in outlets covering Spanish, Mandarin, and Korean that were not counted in that formula.
And Executive Director Ryan from the Board of Elections spoke about geo-fencing in social media. That's also something that is not counted towards the percentage in that community and ethnic media policy. So we do a lot of advertising that's geo-fenced in language, specifically for folks who live in those areas that speak those languages. And that's particularly important for us because our mandate requires us to reach underrepresented groups. Of course, we know that youth vote at a much lower level than the rest of the population, and they're more likely to be on social media as well.
If it's possible, be grateful I could get the list of all the different outlets that there's been advertising in. Thank you.
Absolutely.
I'm good. I think we're all good here. Thank you.
We'll now turn to public testimony. Our first panelists will be Susan Lerner. After that, I'll be calling on three Zoom panelists, Sean Johnson, followed by Whitney Quezenberry, and then Chris Hughes. For the Zoom panelists, I will call on you when it is your turn to speak.
Thank you. Good morning. Thank you very much for this opportunity to be heard, and thank you very much for the introduction of Intro 696 and the Council's concern about ranked choice voting. I'm Susan Lerner. I'm the Executive Director of Common Cause New York and Board Chair for Rank the Vote NYC, both organizations that worked to pass ranked choice voting in the 2019 referendum and who worked with numerous community partners to make the 2021 introduction of ranked choice voting in New York City successful. My written testimony concentrates on Intro 696, but listening to the Council's questioning, I realized there's additional information, which I will supplement, that includes the exit polling, which Rank the Vote NYC did. For exit polling, questioning the voters on the June primary after they had voted, which shows a very high level of satisfaction with ranked choice voting in the 90 percentiles, and also questioning voters about their use of ranked choice voting, where we found that over 80% of the voters who participated in the poll told us that they ranked at least one candidate. And we have specific questions where we asked the voters who indicated that they had ranked only one candidate, whether they did that deliberately. And the vast majority of voters who ranked only one candidate told us that they ranked, they knew they had the ability to rank, but they chose to vote for only one. And so I think that there is a general sense that the introduction of ranked choice voting was successful. I want to acknowledge the really open and ongoing collaboration which our organizations had with both the Board of Elections and with the CFP. Conversation started in 2020. It was a very open and collaborative dialogue that continued all the way through and passed the election and I think led to, was a significant contributor to the success of ranked choice voting. I also want to provide, in supplementing my testimony, a link to a study that was done by CUNY. We at Common Cause, with the assistance of some national funders, have been able to grant to some academic institutions to dive into the experience which voters had with ranked choice voting. And CUNY did a detailed analysis. There'll be additional reports, academic analyses coming out from other institutions in the next year or so. But right now, we have the CUNY analysis, which I think supplements what the CFP has told us in terms of how voters actually interfaced with ranked choice voting and how many voters did indeed use ranked choice voting. So in my remaining time, I would like to just point out some aspects of Intro 696 to acknowledge that the Board worked very closely with us in the Center for Civic Design in designing the 2021 ranked choice voting ballot. I was very pleased that the Board went ahead and did a mock-up of how the ballot would be changed. And we believe improved if 696 were the law. And I would like to point to one factor, and then I'll let my written testimony stand for the rest of it, which is that we have been doing a lot of work at Common Cause New York regarding readability and how language appears on the ballot, both for instructions and for measures where the voters have to make a determination. And we took the existing charter language and ran it through a website which assesses the readability. And the existing charter language comes out at an eighth-grade reading level, which is definitely acceptable. But that is the maximum complicated reading level that we advocate should be on the ballot or provided to voters. The language that 696 would place on the ballot shows a reading comprehension level of the second-grade reading comprehension, which means that it is particularly clear and particularly easy to translate. And we're particularly excited with the way in which the changes in 696 would assist voters who speak more than one language, who are non-English proficient voters. So thanks to the Council for the introduction. Look forward to working for the passage of this bill and then working with the Board to be sure that it is implemented in the most positive way possible.
Thank you, Susan. Thank you so much for your hard work. I do not have any questions. Councilmember Brewer?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now hear from three Zoom panelists. First, I'll be calling on Sean Johnson, followed by Whitney Quezenberry, and then Chris Hughes. Sean Johnson, you may begin when ready.
Time has begun.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you, Councilmembers, for the opportunity to speak to you about implementing important changes to ranked choice voting ballots in New York City. My name is Shawnee Thomas-Johnson. I'm a designer and researcher at the Center for Civic Design. I'm also the lead for plain language and an expert on forms and instructions for voters. The Center for Civic Design is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit. We're nonpartisan. Our main goal is to make elections work for everyone. Our approach is to combine best practices, solid design research, and our years of experience in elections to improve the voting process. We work directly with elections offices across the country, large and small. We've helped these offices design better voter guides, vote-by-mail envelopes, all kinds of election forms and notices, and, most relevant today, ranked choice voting ballots. Our experience in designing ranked choice voting materials is vast. We were proud to support the successful first ranked choice voting election in New York City. Our work included usability research with English and Spanish-speaking voters before the election, design advice to the Campaign Finance Board, Board of Elections, and others, developing voter education and ballots, and interviews with voters after their first ranked choice voting experience. We also worked in Alaska this year and have consulted with officials and advocates in Colorado, DC, Georgia, Virginia, and Washington. Through our research over the last six years, we've seen that voters understand the basic action of ranked choice voting. As one voter told us, "It feels good to have another choice." And when ballots and information are well-designed, voters are able to confidently cast their vote and make their voices heard. But even though voters generally understand how ranked choice voting works... voting works, there's always room for improvement, which is what this bill is all about. And although all New York City voters will benefit from the improvements in this bill, it's the most vulnerable voters who will benefit the most. And there are a few ways that this bill would do that. First, this bill requires that the instructions be shorter and clearer. Plain language instructions are easier to understand for low-literacy readers, rush readers, and voters who speak English as a second language. And when the instructions are shorter, it leaves more space on the ballot for larger text and other visual layout components. All of these things amount to a ballot that's easier to read. When ballots are written in plain language, voters vote them more accurately. Voters also prefer plain language ballots over traditional language ballots, and these effects endure through translation. In other words, plain language facilitates better translations. This leads me to the second way that this bill would help New York City voters. New York City is the most linguistically diverse city in the world.
Time has expired.
In that case, I'll just wrap up by saying, these are small changes to our already effective ballot, and thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. I'll now call on Whitney Quezenberry to testify, followed by Chris Hughes. Whitney Quezenberry, you may begin when ready.
Hi, thank you for the opportunity. I was primarily here to back up Sean Johnson and his excellent testimony. I think the only thing that I would add is that in the work in 2021 in New York City, we were really pleased to see the collaboration among the many groups that touch voters, both within the government and outside of it, and that how important the consistency of the message about how to ranked choice vote, how to ranked choice vote, and what it is, is to voters in being able to trust and believe the information that they hear. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll now be calling on Chris Hughes, followed by Eljoy Williams, and then Tayena Wagnack. Chris Hughes, you may begin when ready.
Time has begun.
Honorable Chair Ung and members of the Committee on Government Operations, thank you for the opportunity to provide virtual testimony to the committee today. As mentioned, my name is Chris Hughes. I'm the Director of Policy at the Ranked Choice Voting Resource Center. My testimony also focuses on Bill Number 696, and I'll run through it quickly as a lot of these points have already been hit by everybody, but I think it helps to have us here, too. So I'm here representing a coalition of nonpartisan, pro-democracy organizations and ranked choice voting experts, including Fair Vote, Represent Us, and Democracy Rising. We urge the committee to advance this Bill Number 696 to improve ranked choice voting ballot designs in New York City for all the reasons that Sean and Whitney and Susan just covered. In sum, the update to New York City's ranked choice voting law ensures that all voters will receive clear and effective ranked choice voting instructions. Research shows that plain language in general voter instructions help voters cast their ballots, and that's especially true in ranked choice voting, especially when it's still a new, novel voting method for voters. While New York City voters in 2021 experienced low error rates and overwhelmingly reported understanding ranked choice voting in that exit poll that Susan mentioned, clearer instructions will enable even more voters, such as low literacy or limited English proficiency voters, to cast effective ballots in the city's next ranked choice voting elections. These revisions will also decrease the length of the instructions required, which will allow for more effective use of ballot space in these ranked choice voting elections. Additionally, as Sean mentioned, these revisions will further enfranchise voters whose first language is not English. Clearly differentiating the multiple languages on a ballot will make it easier for voters to identify their language of choice on ranked choice voting ballots. These updates to the charter ensure that all voters, regardless of their preferred language, have the best opportunity possible to make their voices heard in New York City's primary elections. Thank you for your commitment to ensuring New Yorkers can cast an effective ranked choice voting ballot. We look forward to working with you to advance this legislation and to support the city's ranked choice voting implementation. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Just one quick follow-up question. Have you worked with the BOE to help them use the tabulation software before? Oops. Oh.
Give us a second to unmute you.
Yeah, so we, we worked with the BOE in the certification process to get RC Tab, the software that was used to actually conduct the round-by-round count in the city, to get it certified at the state level. But we, we didn't work with them after certification. And there were stories in the press at the, around the time of the election that cover more details there, but that's, that's what I can say today.
Thank you.
I'll now be calling on Eljoy Williams to testify, followed by Tayena Wagnack, and then Glenn Boloski. Eljoy Williams, you may begin when ready.
Time has begun.
Good morning, and thank you so very much to the committee for inviting me to testify. I am president of Brooklyn NAACP, and also serve as the Legislative Director for the New York State Conference of Branches of the NAACP. We are also in support of any legislation and policy that would make the process of people casting their ballot easier and more easy to understand. The only issue I would raise that has not been raised, because I don't want to use my time on the issues we've already discussed, is regarding the font of the ballot, which a number of our members across the city made of an issue in terms of our follow-up with them as to their understanding, not only of the ranked choice voting process, but them being able to understand by able to actually read it. And so as we redesign, I would ask that we also include the font that we use to ensure that people can actually read the new, more clear instructions as well. However, we also, we obviously support the legislation and look forward to its passage to make this process more smooth. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Can you describe a little bit what made the font hard to read? Is it the size, or is it the actual font that's used?
Just bear with us while we unmute you.
Thank you. It is the size. The size is definitely a challenge. And while we know that there are the magnifying sheets that allow for people to be able to use them in order to cast their ballot, that then obviously adds time. That also is not always available. Most people concentrate that towards seniors, but there are all sorts of people from all walks of life who have visual challenges and not being able to see the size of the font. And so I, reading the text, I didn't see, I didn't see anything about the size of the fonts indicated in there. Obviously, just the clearer directions for RCV itself, but I think that is also of concern.
Thank you. I'll now be calling on Tayena Wagnack to testify. After that, I'll be calling on Glenn Boloski. Tayena Wagnack, you may begin when ready.
Time has begun.
Thank you very much. Bonjour tout le monde. My name is Tayena Wagnack, and I am the Senior Manager of Local Policy and Legislation at the New York Immigration Coalition, which is an umbrella policy and advocacy organization that works statewide with over 200 immigrants serving member organization. And we want to take the time to thank the incomparable Chair Ung and the members of the City Council Committee on Governmental Operation for convening this important hearing, give us the opportunity to testify and discuss a little bit of the concerns. Obviously, I am here today to urge the committee to pass Intro 696, myself and the NYC. We have long supported ranked choice voting, as we are deeply committed to ensuring diversity among our city's elected representatives. And we believe that ranked choice voting empowers voters by making our voting system much more responsive to the choice of each voter. And although we should take the time to acknowledge and celebrate our, the outcomes from the 2021 election, as we've all mentioned, there are some tweaks that we should be mindful. The first being conducting more in-language outreach and education in limited English proficient communities. Send, you know, our ranked choice voting is confusing as it is to English speakers, so imagine it being very confusing and difficult to non-English speakers as well. So information should be distributed to more, in multiple languages, including information on voter registration. Again, the second point is, public messaging should emphasize to voters that they can choose more than one candidate to vote for. The CBF, the panelists, they spoke on this a little bit. A lot of people that still like one for, one candidate do so by their own choosing, but many individual, many voters, they don't fully understand the process, so they don't know that they can select multiple individuals. And so we should emphasize that in public messaging and use the verb rank versus vote. Distribute in-language information about ranked choice voting using multiple mediums, newspaper, TV, radio, social media, subway ads, using visual aids in order to aid voters to understand the process. Creating information, informational guides on candidates and issues on the ballot will, we believe, that will give voters more information to learn about their favorite candidates and to choose, and to learn about the position of such candidates on issues. And most importantly, and we've raised that point, it's been raised before, but having interpreters at poll sites. In-language materials cannot replace the critical work that an interpreter is able to do by having an interpreter at poll site. It could greatly increase the confidence of voters of knowing how to make their, their choices, or to be even be more willing to come out and vote in.
Time has expired.
And all in all, just to say that, again, thank you to the council and the committee for putting this session forward, and we look forward to continue to work together with the members on pushing more information. Thank you for this time.
Thank you. Our next panelist will be Glenn Boloski, and I believe that's the last registered panelist who is in attendance. So if there's anyone on the Zoom who is hoping to testify and hasn't had the chance, please use the Zoom raise hand function. If there's anyone in the audience, please speak to the sergeants. Glenn Boloski, you may begin when ready.
Good morning, still. Can you hear me well?
We can hear you, yes.
Thank you. Appreciate the opportunity to appear today and thank the chairwoman and the committee members and central staff for their help today. Government operations encompasses many things, primarily all the voting rights, which is, of course, primary to our democracy. So I really appreciate the opportunity for the various coalitions on immigration who are here today. My family's immigrants, most of us are, and I think we have to make sure that we do everything. And the point that was made about the font, I'm a publisher. If the font is wrong, it's just not legitimate. So that's, really needs to be addressed. I'm here primarily to address the government operations on another area, parking, tickets in particular. Every council member I speak to is amazed to learn that there are no virtual hearings allowed in terms of the operations of our government at the Parking Violations Bureau. This is known in my language as a shanda. It is, it is an embarrassment on our system, requiring people to drive or, or, or travel far distances to get a hearing. Every other court does it, including the Office of Administrative Trials and Hearings, New York State Supreme Court. This hearing today is on Zoom. It is a fundamental, it's becoming a fundamental right. We'd like to see some proclamation or local law, whether it's enforceable or not, to send a message to the Parking Violation Bureau to please join us in the 21st century and get with it. The second issue about government operations reflecting and dealing with the Parking Violations Bureau, then I have a third one very quickly on DOT, in terms of the Parking Violations Bureau, is this. They have a program in place to benefit the largest companies, the biggest offenders who get the most tickets, where they get automatic discounts that none of us here get. It just seems wrong on the face of it. It is, because it is wrong. And the PVB has put out opinion letters recently in the New York Daily News that despite that they gave away 750 million, 750 million over the last many years to the, most of it to the biggest offenders, is just incredible. In my mind, it's discriminatory, because on one hand, they're giving away very blatant discrimination, and here's why. On one hand, they're giving away 750...
Time has expired.
I wish I had a one-minute warning. Let me just finish my thought, please, that the 750 that they gave away, 750 million, why are they doing that when they're enforcing tax liens on our poorest members of our society? And lastly, government operations, DOT, why are parking signs still from 1950? Can we have LED signs in multiple languages so all of our residents can hear them? Thank you for the extra time, and I appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you. And for the record, I don't see any hands raised on the Zoom, and no one else has come up in person to testify, so I'll turn it over to the chair to close this out.
I want to thank everybody for their testimony today, and I think I speak for everyone. We look forward to a new ballot next year.